The Board of Trustees is now called to order. I now would like to have a second. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/live. I'm going to take my chairman's report, but it hasn't been put in the record. So I'm not going to read through all of this today. I'm going to go to the chancellor's report.
Thank you so much, and I'll read fast. So thank you to your councilmen and all board trustees, vice chancellors, presidents, and deans. Although it's summer, there's still plenty going on at CUNY. Students can earn up to 15 credits during our summer session, which is now underway. We have 63,000 students enrolled. Compared to the same time last year, it's a 2% increase, and if reservations continue to go up at this rate, we'll have a higher summer enrollment than we did last year. Students also continue to access a lot of resources, including the food pantry and the early childhood centers. I'm delighted to report that we wrapped out the commencement season on Friday. Twenty-four or twenty-five schools hosted ceremonies for about 50,000 graduates. Many were students of the first in families to attend college, and their individual stories of perseverance add up to something truly extraordinary. At the valedictorian's reception at BMCC, we heard from BMCC valedictorian Sally Lee Wisdom, an animator major whose hard-working parents instilled in her a central responsibility to succeed. They work an overnight shift delivering laundry, and her mother, an immigrant from China, graduated from BMCC and grew up in college. There are thousands of Sallys and honor graduates every year, talented students with so much promise and possibility ahead of them. I want to echo the remarks that are in Jerry Thompson's record that show my appreciation for the many trustees who attended commencement and delivered remarks on behalf of this board at CUNY. Commencement is always a special sort of directorial occasion, and more so at CUNY, where so many of our students have overcome significant challenges to reach his milestone. We know that we had a more challenging commencement season than normal, so I want to recognize and commend our vice president, student affairs, and their teams, and our dedicated CUNY public safety officers across our 24 colleges and the central office, who helped ensure that our commencement was respectful and memorable for our graduates and their proud family and friends. And I can ask for a big round of applause for all of you today. We've heard the word always early here, but particularly during commencement season. I had the privilege to attend another of our commencement. At the inaugural ceremony, I was delighted to confer an honorary degree to Donald Rehna. He is a co-founder of the Dream.us Foundation, which, over the last decade, has provided more than 10,000 scholarships to Dreamers in more than 20 states, including 1,900 CUNY students. We are grateful to Don for leveraging his platform to help thousands of students access the life-changing benefits of higher education. Our city council speaker, Adrian Adams, who served as the keynote speaker at Kingsborough Community Colleges commencement last week, has been a wonderful friend to CUNY and was the driving force behind CUNY Reconnect, a city-funded program created to engage New Yorkers who earn college credits but stop short of getting a degree. CUNY Reconnect has yielded impressive results, helping re-enroll more than 33,000 students since it was launched in the spring of 2022. More than 10% of those who returned have already completed their degree. The success of CUNY Reconnect is part of our bigger picture of recovery from the pandemic. Final enrollment figures from this academic year show that overall enrollment increased by 3% to over 2,33,000 compared to the fall of 2022. Enrollment at community colleges showed gains of 10%. This is welcome news, especially when we recall that the pandemic declines were hardest felt by our community colleges. Students are doing more than just enrolling and showing up. They're succeeding in extraordinary ways. We recently announced that more than 100 of our students won a mix of highly thought national accolades like Fulbright Awards, the National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowship, the Jack Kent Cooke Undergraduate Transfer Scholarship, and admission into the Shropshire Scholars Program. We also congratulate the winners of prestigious CUNY honors like the Jonas A. Salk Scholarship, which is given to students who have been accepted to medical schools or graduate programs in the biomedical sciences. Speaking of careers, last month, along with Mayor Adams, we announced a nearly $12 million expansion of our CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative, which will enable us to bring career advising, internship, and full-time opportunities to an additional 1,200 students annually across more than 20 new academic departments. This will help us reach our goal of connecting all of our CUNY grads to careers by 2030, as outlined in last year's strategic plan, and continue to lift New York as only CUNY can do. Earlier this month, executives by chancellor, university provost Wendy Enso and vice chancellor, Alicia Albero testified at the New York City Council about the transformational progress that CUNY has made in recent years to establish a seamless transfer of credits for students who transfer between an associate and bachelor degrees within the same major. These have been a priority of this board, and thanks to your leadership and support, we are already seeing the results of this work, and we are on target of completing the process as planned by the end of this year. So, quick note: 30 Dreamers from six CUNY colleges traveled to Mexico. They sprinted no cost for a study abroad program that was driven by CUNY Citizenship Now. This was a rare opportunity that enabled many of the participants to reconnect with family members they had not seen since living the country as young children. It also has the potential to aid their applications for legal residency. I want to extend my special thanks to Miss Tecca, the Hispanic Federation, and CFE International for the generous financial and logistical support of the trip. I have a few members of the faculty and staff to shout out. One is Leima Bohaia, who is the executive director of CUNY's Institute on Gender Law and Transformative Peace, as well as a 2011 Nobel Peace Prize winner. She was recently selected by the Melinda Gates Foundation to distribute $20 million to charitable organizations and grassroots leaders advancing women's health and well-being. She was one of only 12 global leaders selected for this honor. Stereophonic, the sold-out Broadway play by Hunter College professor David A. G. Mead, received a record of 13 Tony nominations and won five awards, including Best Play. Congratulations to David. Tomorrow is Selection Day, and I am proud to say that four CUNY campuses will once again serve us polling places, and nine of our campuses were also locations for early voting, which wrapped up yesterday. So please don't forget to vote tomorrow. This Sunday is New York City's Pride March, and CUNY's faculty, students, and staff will be marching, as they have for the past couple of years. We are grateful for the general support of the CUNY LDBTK AI Plus Consortium in partnership with the New York City Council to make this happen. In closing, I want to recognize Dr. Anne Kishner, who's wrapping her tenure as the interim president of Hunter College. There's a resolution honoring her, so I'll leave the rest of the accolades and thank Anne for her service in this past year. I also want to thank James Gallo, our vice chancellor for university advancement, who will be starting a new role at the University of Texas Medical Branch on June 8. His leadership helped CUNY to secure the three largest gifts in its history, and he oversaw consecutive years of record-setting fundraising. And finally, this is the last meeting of Glenda Grace, CUNY senior vice chancellor for institutional affairs, strategic advancement, and special counsel. Glenda has been one of my longtime advisors at the central office, at Queens College, and at Ulster's Community College. Glenda, thank you for 15 years of leadership and service to CUNY. Through your passion and expertise, you left your mark not only with your colleagues, but on an immeasurable number of students as well. We wish you all the best. We thank you so much. Anne. That concludes my report, and happy Fourth of July and an enjoyable summer.
Thank you, chancellor, for your report. And also, and yes, you were right, it was in my comments, but again, to my colleagues, let me, or two things. Number one, let me thank you for the work that you do all year round. Thank you for the attending of graduations, and we're about to go through an extensive calendar this evening. All of that work is work that's been done in the committees, that the work that you've already done. We're going to try and get through this as quickly as we can. There are 163 items today that we're trying to consolidate, but all of that work was work that you've done on the committees. So I just wanted to say thank you again. I just think that, you know, as I said, it's the greatest bargain in the city of New York right now, and the state of New York is the work that's done by the CUNY trustees, and how much you all are paid for doing that, or all of us are paid for doing that. Now let's turn to items requiring a vote today. Item number one, draft minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of May 20th, 2024. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second? Any discussion on the minutes? Now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, let me call the committee on audit chair Kevin Kim to present and move the following.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Audit and Compliance considered the following matter at its meeting on June 3, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2024 external audit plan. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the board's consideration.
Have a second for this? Any discussion? Let's now move to all those in favor. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Trustee, I now call on committee on finance and administration chair, Professor B. R. To present.
Mr. Chairman, if this will stay on, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters extensively and at length at its meeting on June 3, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 3A is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York's fiscal year 2025 operating budget and capital budget allocations. I do note that we will be revisiting this after the city council adopts a budget, but we are presenting with the information we have now, and I present item 3A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any questions? We'll now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to authorize a Hunter College academic excellence fee for the nurse anesthesia, adult gerontology, acute care, nurse practitioner, doctor of nursing practice program. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a college of Staten Island academic excellence fee for the Master of Arts in Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3D is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter into an agreement for an early college initiative in hospitality management and approve the waiver of tuition and fees related to this initiative at the New York City College of Technology. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize entering into a new management agreement with Capstone On Campus Management LLC for management services at the Queens College Q Student Residences LLC project student housing facility referred to as Queens College Summit Student Housing Building, and to authorize entering into a new management agreement with Capstone On Campus Management LLC for management services and Educational Housing Services, Inc., for its participation in the project at the City College Student Housing Facility referred to as the Towers at City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to authorize purchase of Zoom licenses. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3G is a resolution to authorize an enterprise licensing agreement with Proofpoint for email security in the cloud. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3G for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3H is a resolution to authorize a new Cisco SmartNet Enterprise License Agreement, ELA, for hardware and support services, which provide the university with 24/7 access to Cisco experts to assist and support CUNY IT staff to resolve issues with CUNY's network switches and routers to maintain the university network stable. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3H for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3I is a resolution to authorize a contract with Microsoft for Enrollment Education Solutions, EES, to maintain access to Microsoft products and services to be procured under a New York State Office of General Services contract. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3I for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3J is a resolution to authorize an enterprise agreement for CoreView Enterprise licenses. Over the past three years, the City University of New York has implemented CoreView Enterprise to enable each campus to manage and administer Microsoft Office 365. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3J for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3K is a resolution to authorize a contract with Alucion LP to provide a free application federal student aid, FAFSA verification system. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3K for the board's consideration.
I'd like to, may I have a second for that item? Any discussion on it? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3L is a resolution to authorize a contract with Ainsworth, Inc., to provide ongoing maintenance and required repairs of HVAC systems. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3L for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Opposed or abstentions? Item 3L has been approved.
Item 3M is authorized, is a resolution to authorize a contract with Staples Advantage and SMB Computer and Office Products for office supplies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3M for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on it? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3M is approved.
Item 3N is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Google LLC for the university to place digital advertisements for recruitment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3N for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3O is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Hulu for the university to place digital advertisements for recruitment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3O for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3P is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with LinkedIn for the university to place digital advertisements for recruitment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3P for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3Q is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Meta and its related entities Facebook and Instagram for the university to place digital advertisements for recruitment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3Q for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3Q has been approved.
Item 3R is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Spotify for the university to place digital advertisements for recruitment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3R for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3R has been approved.
Item 3S is a resolution to authorize a contract with Richmond Elevator Company to provide elevator maintenance services at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3S for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3T is a resolution to authorize a contract with all of eSolutions to provide the eMedly Learning Management System to the CUNY School of Medicine. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3T for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3U is a resolution to authorize, to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3U for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3V, 3 through 3II are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the executive compensation plan as follows. No, we don't let running out of the alphabet stop us on this. Just keep going. Item 3VWXY are at the central office. Ann Lobes is senior university dean of graduate and undergraduate programs. Maureen Hickock as university dean for records and executive registrar. Cara Heffernan as university dean of student success initiatives. Althea Ford as interim dean of special programs. Item 3Z at Baruch College is Stephanie Janati as vice president of information services. Item 3AA at Brooklyn College, April Bedford, senior vice president and provost for academic affairs. Item 3BB, CC, and DD at Hunter College, Cynthia Vance, interim vice president for strategic initiatives. Gustavo Ordones as interim vice president for administration. And Erica Chito Childs as interim dean of the School of Arts and Sciences. Item 3EE, John J. College, Allison Pease, provost and senior vice president for academic affairs. Item 3FF at Kingsborough Community College, Andres Escobar as interim vice president of finance administration. Item 3GG at Lehman College, Jorge Silves Portas as provost and senior vice president for academic affairs and student success. Item 3HH and HI at Medgar Evers College, Owen Brown as dean of the School of Liberal Arts, and Micah Crump as interim dean of student success. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3V through 3II for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items? Any discussion? One thing, I understand from the chancellor's office that they would like to lay over item 3BB, as Ms. Vance will be leaving on June 30, 2024. So as part of this, I move to lay over item 3BB. Do I? Thank you. So now, may I have a vote to approve the remaining items? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Mr. Chairman, although I still have some double letters left, that concludes my report.
Well, we could try and find additional resolutions.
I hear we can go to triple letters next time, too, if we're really good. Thank you.
Let me now call a committee on education policy chair Jill O'Donnell-Tormey to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on June 3, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 4A1 is a resolution to establish a doctor of education program in higher education administration at Baruch. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A1 for the board's consideration.
Second.
Item 4A2 is a resolution to establish a master's program in early childhood education at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A2 for the board's consideration.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A3 is a resolution to establish a program in Black, Race, and Ethnic Studies leading to a doctor of philosophy and a master's of arts degree at the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A4 is a resolution to establish a master's program in family nurse practitioner at the School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A4 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4B1 is a resolution to establish the Department of Black Studies Item 4B1 is a resolution to establish the Department of Black Studies at the City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4B2 is a resolution to abolish the Department of World Languages and Cultures at Kingsbury Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4B3 is a resolution to establish the Department of Community Health and Wellness at LaGuardia Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Item 4B3 is approved.
Item 4B4 is a resolution to close the Department of Philosophy and Religion and relocate programs to the Department of Social and Behavioral Sciences in the School of Liberal Arts at Medgar Evers College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B4.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4C1 is a resolution to amend Article 7 of the Medgar Evers College Governance Plan. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4C1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Is there any discussion? Okay, it's my understanding that the Chancellor's office would like to offer an amendment to the plan on behalf of the college as follows. Please add language to the end of Article 7, Section 3D2. Oh, to read "a designated officer authorized by the community council and a designated officer authorized by the alumni association." May I have a vote to approve the item as amended? All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D1 is a resolution to approve a policy for use of a learning management system for online classes. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D2 is a resolution to amend the university's policy regarding the Human Research Protections Program. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D3 is a resolution to amend the university's academic integrity policy. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D4 is a resolution to amend the protocol for authorizing the release of official student transcripts. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D4 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Items 4E1 through 4E9 are resolutions requesting to award early tenure with an application of bylaws 6.2C2 as follows. Hunter College, Daniel Burke, Jorge Luis Arizandé López, Vincent Martinez, Anne Ortega Williams, and Carolyn Sun. At Lehman College, Julio Gallego Delgado, Jennifer Jolie, Eileen Markey. CUNY School of Law, Chung Toyley Hoak. Mr. President, I present items 4E1 through 4E9 for the board's consideration, and sorry for messing up any names.
But this is very good. Um, may I have a second for these items? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Items 4F1 through 4F6 are resolutions requesting appointments with immediate tenure for six faculty from four campuses as follows. College of Staten Island, Lakshmi Rama Subramyan, CUNY Graduate Center, Jean Beeman and Caitlin Beach, Hunter College, Indranil Sangupta and Sarah Greenberger Rafferty, and Lehman College, George Silva Pures. Mr. Chairman, I present items 41 through 4F1 through 4F6 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Items 4G1 through 4G5 are resolutions pertaining to the appointment of distinguished professors as follows. College of Staten Island, Ashley Dawson as Distinguished Professor of English. Lehman College, Timothy Alborn as Distinguished Professor of History, and Naomi Zach as Distinguished Professor of Philosophy. Queens College, Kate Menken as Distinguished Professor of Linguistics and Communication Disorders. CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy, Christian Grove as a distinguished professor. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4G1 through 4G5 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Item 4H1 is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4H1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion on these items? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4H2 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4H2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4I is a resolution to decertify inactive centers and institutes. In accordance with Board of Trustees Policy 1.09, college leaders have identified centers and institutes that have become inactive or have merged with other entities that no longer fully align with the strategic priorities of the home college or lack a realistic path to financial self-sufficiency. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4I for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4J1 through 4J61, oh gosh, are resolutions pertaining to the recertification of 61 centers and institutes across the university. The proposed actions to authorize the recertification of centers and institutes across 11 campuses were carried out in compliance with the current Board of Trustees Policy 1.09, which requires such entities to be recertified every five years. In cases where the entities are not yet entirely financially self-sustaining, the recertification is generally for three years. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4J1 through 4J61 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that? Any discussion? Yes.
Ask that one of the 61 centers that is listed of, I don't remember which item exactly it is of the 61, but that the Latin American, the Center for Latin American Studies be held over under, for further consideration, given some questions about their financial viability, also some questions on leadership, and also on stakeholder relationships, external stakeholder relationships. So I ask that we table that item for further consideration.
Okay. That's item 4J23. Um, do I have a second for that item to be laid, I guess, for that item to be laid over? So... Let's take a vote on the layover item. So all of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? So, let me now have a vote, or then again, any comments on the remaining items? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Item 4K1 is a resolution to establish and certify the MWBE Advancement Center at LaGuardia Community College for a three-year period. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4K1 for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second for this item? Uh, any discussion? And I would just, let me just say how excited I am to see this move forward in LaGuardia. This is going to be something that is fabulous. I'd like to thank the leadership of the school and the outside support that is received. Um, any other comments on this? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And again, let me mention that, given how many, the large volume that we have today, uh, let me thank my colleagues for all the work that you did. Is when you start to talk about items, you know, 1 through 61, in one resolution, a lot of work went into that. So let me thank all of you again for the work that was done, for the focus that's been brought, and let me thank the Secretary's office.
And the provost and, and, and the academic affairs teams.
And, wait a second, I wouldn't let you say that.
And, and, and the provost and the entire OA team has been working very hard in this process, so kudos to them, too.
Let me say thank you to the provost, and on behalf of my colleagues for all the work. What is, I heard a little, okay, there we go. Um, and, but, but, but everybody should understand, as I said, and let me thank the Secretary's office for coming up with a novel way to get us through this, at least before midnight. Let's see, we are down here. So now let me go to item number five. Let me call a committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair, Lorraine Cortez-Vazquez, to present and move the following items.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Committee on Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting again of June 3rd, 2024, and I will present the following. Item 5A is a resolution requesting the name, the naming of Randy Potoc and Judith Potoc and Dorothy Hausberg Memorial Endowment Scholarship at Ujainio Maria de Ostos Community College. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5B is a resolution requesting the naming of the High Tech Prep Math Tutoring Special Endowment Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Chairman, that concludes the report.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, let me now call a committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair, Brian Oberfeld, to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on June 3rd, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 6A is a resolution to authorize renovations to the 16th floor of 555 West 57th Street, New York, for the purpose of consolidated lease premises. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 6B is a resolution to authorize an extension of the existing interim lease at a new dormitory at 569 Lexington Avenue, New York, for Baruch College and Hunter College, the City University of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 6C is a resolution to authorize the addition of dormitory beds and an extension of the term of the leasehold condominium dormitory at 569 Lexington Avenue, New York, for Baruch College and Hunter College through City University of New York. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I now present item 6C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for the item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 6D is a resolution to authorize a lease agreement and design and construction agreement between City University Construction Fund and the New York City School of Construction Authority for the joint development of a new building for the City University of New York and a new building as an annex to the existing Mega Evers High School for use by the New York City Department of Education at 1186 Carroll Street, Brooklyn, at Mega Evers College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Abstention, okay. That item has been approved. One abstention.
Item 6E is a resolution to authorize design and construction for the buildout of the leasehold condominiums at 63 Madison Avenue. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 6F is a resolution to authorize acquisition of 34-49 107th Street and 34-52 107th Street, Corona, New York, to CUNY from Queens College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Let me thank you, trustee. Uh, let me now call on Committee on Student Affairs Vice Chair, Michael R. Venides, to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Student Life considered the following matters at its meeting on June 3rd, 2024, which I will now present to the board for their approval as the last committee report of this calendar year, this academic year. Uh, item 7A, a resolution to approve the revised graduate division student activity fee increase at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 7A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion on the item? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item 7B is a resolution to approve the undergraduate student activity fee increase at Hostos Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 7B for the board's consideration. May I have a second for the item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
And finally, item 7C is a resolution to approve the revised student government constitution at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Chair, I present item 7C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chair, this concludes my report. Thank you.
Trustee, let me thank you for the last committee report of the school year. The chancellor has asked the board to consider five additional resolutions, and I'd like to ask that we consider three in addition to those. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolutions for the record. We'll first vote at the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, please read the resolutions as quickly as possible.
Item number eight is a resolution to approve the City University of New York 2023-2028 collective bargaining agreement with the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local 1, whereas the City University of New York, the University, and the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local 1, covering employees at the Sylvia and Danny K. Playhouse at Hunter College, the Brooklyn Center for the Performing Arts at Brooklyn College, the Hostos Center for the Arts and Culture at Hostos Community College, and the Gerald W. Lynch Theater at John Jay College of Criminal Justice, are parties to a collective bargaining agreement that expired on July 15, 2023. And whereas the City University of New York and International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local 1 have negotiated a successor collective bargaining agreement covering the 61-month period and provide for two, two-and-a-half percent wage increases, one 2% wage increase, one 3% wage increase, and one 3.125% wage increase and certain other benefits. And whereas International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local 1 has put the tentative agreement to its membership for ratification vote, which was completed on June 23, 2024, now therefore be it resolved that the collective bargaining agreement between the City University of New York and the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees Union Local 1 for the period July 16, 2023, through August 15, 2028, is hereby approved, subject to this union's ratification, which has now happened, and be it further resolved... this union's ratification, which has now happened, and be it further resolved that the chancellor is hereby authorized to execute this agreement, which, along with this approval, will not be in effect until the ratification vote has been completed by the union.
I'd like to make a motion to add item eight to our agenda. May I have a second? Let's move back to a vote. All those in favor of the addition? Aye. Item eight has been moved. I'd like to now move item eight. May I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item nine is a resolution to appoint Joshua Brumberg as president of the CUNY Graduate Center. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appointed Joshua Brumberg as interim president of the CUNY Graduate Center for the Graduate Center on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And whereas during Dr. Brumberg's tenure as interim president, the Graduate Center has been awarded historic funding for several initiatives, including a seventy-five million-dollar grant from the Simons Foundation for a new CUNY computational science program, and five million-dollar Mellon Foundation grant to support Black Race and Ethnic Studies at the Graduate Center. And whereas Dr. Brumberg served as the dean for the sciences at the Graduate Center from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-three, where he directed eleven doctoral programs and five MS programs in sciences, technology, engineering, and math, STEM, research operations for the Graduate Center, and the Advanced Science Research Center for the City University of New York, the University, and the university's instructional program and financial aid budgets for STEM programs. And whereas as a member of the senior staff of the Graduate Center, Dr. Brumberg has co-authored the Subcommittee for Strategic Plan Development and the Subcommittee, sorry, I apologize, co-chaired the Subcommittee for Strategic Plan Development and the Subcommittee for Middle States Accreditation, and created and raised funding for diversity programs in the laboratory sciences, as well as gender equity and mathematics. And whereas Dr. Brumberg previously directed the university's doctoral training in psychology and served as acting executive director of the university's Advanced Science Research Center from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And whereas Dr. Brumberg is a professor of psychology at Queens College and has published over sixty peer-reviewed articles and has received multiple grants from the National Science Foundation and the National Institutes of Health. And whereas Dr. Brumberg holds a PhD in neurobiology from the University of Pittsburgh and a P and a BA in biology from Williams College. And whereas in special situations, the Board of Trustees Manual of General Policy, two-point-one-two Guidelines for Presidential Searches, provides for exceptions to these guidelines for a specific search and substitution of a shortened process after the board chairperson, and the chancellor consult with the chair of the Board Committee on Finance Administration and Leadership of College Constituencies. And whereas special situations are defined in policy two-point-one-two as including, but are not limited to, the existence of a candidate of proven distinction from within the university, a former university executive, a candidate of national prominence from the outside of the university, or an exceptional candidate from a recent City University of New York presidential search. And whereas the board chairperson and the chancellor consulted with the chair of the Board of Committee on Finance and Administration. And whereas there was formal consultation with various college constituencies, including elected faculty leadership, elected student leadership, alumni, foundation board members, and friends of the college about the needs of the college and expectations for the new Graduate Center president. And whereas based upon this consultation and Dr. Brumberg's performance throughout his career and during this year, the chancellor has determined that Dr. Brumberg has a proven record of distinction, which greatly enriches the Graduate Center and the university, and it is in the best interest of the Graduate Center and the university that Dr. Brumberg be appointed president. And whereas the chancellor recommends the appointment of Dr. Brumberg as the CUNY Graduate Center's president, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Joshua Brumberg as president of the CUNY Graduate Center, effective May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, with an annual salary, excuse me, of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, subject to fiscal ability.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second? All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions there? That's been added. I'd like to move item number nine. May I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item? All right, let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? We have a new permanent leader in CUNY.
To your behalf, Dr. Brumberg and the audience, may we ask that you please hand up a hand in the air.
Resolution number item ten is a resolution to establish the CUNY School of Medicine as a unit of the CUNY Graduate School and University Center at the City University of New York. Whereas in twenty sixteen, Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education at the City College of New York, CCM-Y, was named the City University of New York School of Medicine, CUNY Med, following preliminary accreditation as a medical school by the Liaison Committee on Medical Education through the LCME, and remained a school at CCM-Y. And whereas CUNY Med obtained full LCME accreditation in twenty twenty-three and maintains full accreditation from the Accreditation Review Committee for the Education of Physician Assistance, ARCPA, to administer its accelerated BS/MD program, standalone MD program, and MS and physician assistant studies program respectively. And whereas CUNY Med has remained true to its mission of providing equitable opportunities and expanding access to medical education for diverse, extremely talented individuals historically underrepresented in medicine and producing highly skilled, diverse medical professionals who provide high-quality healthcare services to marginalized disadvantaged and underserved communities of New York. And whereas CUNY Med graduates have a residency match rate and a first-at-tem pass rate for medical licensing exams above the national average. And whereas CUNY Med graduates are two-and-a-half, and, sorry, two-and-a-half more times likely than other New York State physicians to work in health professions shorter generations, particularly as primary care physicians. And whereas CUNY Med is one of the most diverse medical schools in the nation, ranked for its enrollment of Black, African-American, female, Latinx students, Latinx students, and on average, more than Black and Latinx students, four times more than other medical schools located in your state. And whereas CUNY Med's current structure as a school within a primarily non-doctoral institution differs from national practice. And whereas the CUNY Graduate School and University Center has experience in transitioning CUNY institutions to independent units of the CUNY Graduate School and University Center, including transitioning the Joseph S. Murphy Institute for Worker Education and Labor Studies to the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies, and transitioning the CUNY School of Public Health to the CUNY School of Public Health and Health Policy. And whereas CUNY Med's transition to the CUNY Graduate School and University Center will lead to new funding and programmatic opportunities, including a new M.T.-PhD program, new master programs, new doctoral programs, and new postgraduate residency programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the transition of the CUNY School of Medicine from a school at the City College of New York to a unit of the CUNY Graduate School and University Center, effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, operating as an independently, as an independent entity under the University Center designation. And be it further resolved that the chancellor develop and implement a plan to accomplish this transition, including the revision of the governance plan for the CUNY Graduate School and University Center, and development of a governance plan for the CUNY School of Medicine by the University Office of General Counsel and all relevant parties.
I'd like to make a motion to add item ten to our agenda. May I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item number ten has been added. I'd like to move item number ten. May I have a second? Any discussion on this item? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Item number ten has been approved.
Item number eleven.
I know that we are our dean covering the audience, so just want to give her a shout
Item number eleven is a resolution of appreciation for interim president Anne Kershner at Hunter College. Whereas Anne Kershner was appointed interim president at Hunter College of the City University of New York on July one, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Dr. Kershner is a longtime member of the City University of New York, the university community, and was dean of the Macaulay Honors College from two thousand and six to two thousand and sixteen, where she launched the Macaulay Honors College Foundation, established a fellowship advising program, gained two free grants and authority from a college undergraduate degrees from New York State, increased applications by three hundred percent, and purchased and renovated the Macaulay Building in University Lincoln Center, Akron, and established it as a cultural center and administrative home for students that in fact. And whereas from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, Dr. Kershner served as strategic advisor to the chancellor, advising on opportunities for public private partnerships and innovation initiatives across universities and twenty-four campuses such as women in technology and entrepreneurship with King. And whereas Dr. Kershner was also appointed as a university professor at the CUNY Graduate Center from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, where she was a faculty fellow in the future initiative founded in twenty fourteen to develop new engaged collaborative technologies that empower the next generation of intellectual leaders. Whereas Dr. Kershner holds a PhD in English from Princeton University and an MA in English from the University of Virginia and a BA in English from the University of Buffalo. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York offer their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation for Dr. Kershner's achievements as a leader and educator at Hunter College.
I'd like to make a motion to add item eleven to our agenda. May I have a second? All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item eleven has been added to our agenda. I move item number eleven. May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Thanks, and the audience, clearly our appreciation to our colleague Anne Kershner. I know that there is a small celebration organized for her at Roosevelt House at this point, so again, thanks. And to, for her service, she's not done yet, she has a couple more months. Also, before we have Dr. Nasek Hunter join us at Hunter, so thanks to him.
Item number twelve is a resolution to appoint Mateh Nukho as senior vice chancellor for communications and marketing. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appointed Mateh Nukho as vice chancellor for communications and marketing at the City University of New York on May seventh, twenty nineteen. And whereas Ms. Nukho's five years as vice chancellor, she led the shift in marketing strategy from all print and local newspapers to digital to meet our prospective students where they consume their media, and as a result, the university is now running over two million dollars in dozens of big digital ad campaigns across multiple states featured our students and campuses. And whereas Ms. Nukho spearheaded successful large-scale outdoor ad campaigns in subway and bus lines, and in fiscal year twenty-four alone, launched three outdoor campaigns, a degree for every dream, CUNY Reconnect, and ASAP, for a total of five point three million dollars. And whereas Ms. Nukho also managed the updated City University of New York website and overhaul homepage, menu, mobile version, and six hundred-plus individual web pages, also introducing shorts and photography to tell the stories of our university. And whereas Mateh Nukho is an experienced leader with an extensive background in communications, journalism, education, and government, serving as director of communications with senior advisor to the New York City Department of Education and chancellor from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. And whereas Ms. Nukho has more than twenty-five years of progressive marketing and digital communications experience, has led multiple strategic initiatives in New York City's Department of Education, has redesigned and branded multiple internal and external publications, and is committed to being transparent and working collaboratively to shape culture and deliver results. And whereas Ms. Nukho holds a BA in journalism studies from the University of Massachusetts, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Mateh Nukho as senior vice chancellor for communications and marketing, effective July one, twenty twenty-four, with an annual salary of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, subject to fiscal ability.
I'd like to make a motion to add item twelve to our agenda. May I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item twelve has been added. I'd like to move item number twelve. May I have a second? Any discussion on the item? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Item number thirteen is a resolution to establish and certify a Center for Inclusive Excellence and Belonging. Whereas the City University of New York, the university, was founded on the principle of equal access and opportunity, and whereas the university has long been recognized as one of the most diverse university systems in the nation, students and faculty hailing from over a hundred countries. And whereas the university's commitment to protecting and supporting students has not wavered through its hundred and seventy-five-year existence. And whereas the university has an important role in providing education and training to address the concerns of our students, faculty, and staff, to confront bigotry and discrimination. And whereas the Center for Inclusive Excellence and Belonging will address these challenges with the power of education, training, dialogue, and monitoring to ensure that all members of the university community feel safe and included in its mission. And whereas the Center for Inclusive Excellence and Belonging, CIDEB, is committed to promoting dialogue, fostering understanding, intellectual curiosity, and scholarly pursuit of cultural and religious diversity. And whereas the Center for Inclusive Excellence and Belonging will be the organization within the university that will harness system-wide resources to address common understanding across all ethnicities, race, color, gender, national origin, religion, and disabilities. And whereas CIDEB will review, implement, and administer policies relating to discrimination, harassment, bullying, and address hate-related issues. And whereas CIDEB will also serve as the leader in educating the university community on best practices, training, and dispute resolution as it relates to such complaints. And whereas CIDEB will also be responsible for reviewing and implementing any proposed provisions to the university's, excuse me, nondiscrimination policies and procedures. And whereas CIDEB will serve as a central administrative arm of the university in the oversight of processing, monitoring, and responding to all complaints related to the violation of the university's policies on nondiscrimination, excuse me, and harassment, including Title VI-related complaints. And whereas CIDEB will monitor annual training for new diverse chief diversity officers, coupled with annual orientation programs outlining best practices, and will also provide annual training on cultural sensitivity-related issues for public safety officers. And whereas CIDEB will oversee and manage the university's comprehensive portal for the processing of complaints filed by students, faculty, and staff, and provide accurate accounting and investigation for the resolution, excuse me, and disposition of those complaints. Sorry. And whereas CIDEB will create programming and events to bring the university community together and promote education and dialogue. And whereas the total budget for staffing and resources for the proposed center will be secured through existing resources and funding of the university's central office, grants, local elective officials, and other philanthropic resources. And whereas the plan for the launch and implementation of the CIDEB should be presented to the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York no later than October one, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the establishment of the Center for Inclusive Excellence and Belonging at the City University, which shall be certified for a three-year period, effective July one, twenty twenty-four, as CIDEB intensifies its effort to become entirely self-supporting.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move item, I'd like to add, make a motion to add item thirteen to our agenda. May I have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item thirteen has been added. I'd like to move item thirteen. May I have a second? Any discussion on this item? The one item I would like to do, and we will do it in greater detail in the, in the future, but I would like to thank Justice Jonathan Litt, and for his but I would like to thank Justice Jonathan Lippman for his work, his collaboration, and his advice that went into the creation of this center. It is a pleasure to work with the judge. He's somebody who is, uh, who's very wise, very smart, and just a great human being. So I'd like to thank Judge Lippman for his work that led to this. With that, any other comments? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Okay, great. Uh, item number fourteen, almost getting to the end, is a resolution to name the Rochelle Boone Endowment at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at the City University of New York and or Baruch College. Whereas Rochelle Boone was an Emmy Award winning reporter and anchor for New York City TV station Yard One, proud Jamaican, and a Baruch College graduate who was beloved by New Yorkers and passed away due to complications related to pancreatic cancer. And whereas Rochelle Boone was open about her cancer journey, sharing regular updates on social media, and was dedicated to raising awareness about cancer and other health issues. And whereas Rochelle Boone was known publicly as a reporter and consummate New Yorker, was also a daughter, sister, wife, and most importantly, mom to her two sons, Carter and Jackson. And whereas Rochelle Boone was a proud member of the Caribbean diaspora, born in Kingston, Jamaica, where she spent her early childhood before immigrating to the Bronx with her family when she was eleven years old. And whereas Rochelle Boone joined Yard One as a reporter covering the borough of Queens in two thousand and two, and moved to the anchor desk with a noon slot in twenty twenty one. And whereas Rochelle Boone joined the station in two thousand and two and has covered a number of major news stories, including the twenty sixteen bombing in Manhattan, the twenty sixteen presidential election, the growing homeless problem in New York City, the New Year's Eve celebration in Times Square, and was also known for her coverage of the city's diverse immigrant communities. And whereas in twenty fourteen, she received the award for best spot news reporting from the New York Association of Black Journalists. And in twenty thirteen, she won the New York Press Club's award for best feature reporting. And whereas Rochelle Boone's exclusive interview with Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez after her stunning Democratic primary became a viral sensation seen and heard around the world, with the interview now featured in the Netflix documentary Knock Down the House. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York and supporters of the university pledged fifty thousand dollars to establish the Rochelle Boone Endowment at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at the City University of New York and/or Baruch College, wishing to endow it by pledging an additional fifty thousand dollars payable by June thirty, twenty twenty five. And whereas the City University Board of Trustees approved the planned use of forty million in non recurrent strategic funds, including four million to match new gifts and commitments to endow its programs at the system office and colleges at its October twenty, twenty five, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two board meeting, and this gift is eligible for a match of twenty five percent, or twenty five thousand dollars. And whereas this scholarship, this scholarship or endowment will help to cover the cost of tuition fees and other college related expenses for students at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism and/or Baruch College without consideration of legal immigration status. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the naming of the Rochelle Boone Scholarship at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at the City University of New York and/or Baruch College.
I'd like to make a motion to add item fourteen to our agenda. May I have a second? Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All of those in favor? Item fourteen has been added. I'd like to move item fourteen right now. May I have a second? Any discussion on this item? The one point I would like to make is that shortly after Rochelle's passing, I received a phone call from the Attorney General of the State of New York, Letitia James. This was her idea. Letitia picked the phone up, reached out, and has been, and has followed up, has reached out and called on more than one, on numerous occasions, to make sure that a CUNY grant, Rochelle, a noted New Yorker, would be remembered, and remembered in a positive sense through CUNY. So I would like to thank Attorney General of the State of New York for being so diligent, for being focused, and for not forgetting Rochelle. So I'd like to thank Letitia James. Obviously, we'll say something else in the next day or two, but this is happening because of our Attorney General, who has a heart and absolutely understands that we shouldn't forget good people. So, there you go. With that, I'd like to take a vote on this item. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item fifteen, which will be the last item, and it's referring to myself and to Ann, so just go along with it. It's been given to me. A resolution, that's okay. Resolution to appoint Galen Horwitz as senior vice chancellor and secretary of the Board of Trustees and appoint Anna Fenton as associate vice chancellor and deputy secretary to the Board of Trustees. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the university is committed to enhancing the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of the Board of Trustees' work. And whereas beginning in twenty seventeen, the Board of Trustees adopted a series of reforms of the university's governance and administrative policies, ensuring greater transparency and accountability, including the establishment of the Standing Order Committee of the Board of Trustees and Governance Committee of the Board of Trustees in twenty twenty one, and in twenty twenty two, a complete restructuring of the Board of Trustees' committees and subcommittees to support the Board of Trustees in carrying out its fundamental fiduciary responsibilities and the creation of oversight reports related to administrative, academic, and operational functions of the university. And whereas such restructuring and oversight entail the addition of numerous subcommittees and additional reporting requirements for both committees and subcommittees, including but not limited to the subcommittees on enrollment, research, and innovation, technology, and planning, and diversity inclusion, and MWBE, as well as the expansion of committee responsibilities. And whereas the Board of Trustees remains committed to ensuring best practices and the highest level of fiscal ethical and good governance. And whereas the Office of the Secretary of the Board, including the secretary and the deputy secretary, are instrumental strategic partners and advisors in enabling the Board of Trustees to further the institutional agenda, ensure good governance, and protect the university's commitment to equal access and opportunity. And whereas strategic partners, the secretary and the deputy secretary, have instituted new processes and technology to professionalize the work of the office, including the drafting, editing, and publication of Board of Trustees' resolutions and supporting materials as the official records of the university, as well as the implementation of the first ever electronic platform to efficiently produce Board of Trustees' meeting materials at a significant cost savings, which was vital to ensuring the ongoing continuity of the business operations of the Board of Trustees and thus of the university during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the secretary and the deputy secretary have also introduced a new trustee orientation program, which includes a flipped orientation model to leverage the latest pedagogy and learning by compiling videos from relevant staff, and an e-bond to be viewed by trustees in advance of meetings with staff, enabling greater discussion at these meetings. And whereas as part of their effort to professionalize the operations in the Office of the Secretary to the Board of Trustees, the secretary and the deputy secretary have become active members and participants with national higher education governance organizations, including the Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, the New York Community College Trustees, NYCCT, and the Association of Governing Boards in Colleges and Universities, AGB. And whereas as AGB members, the secretary and the deputy secretary are members of the Board Professionals Leadership Group, BPLG, which develops and facilitates educational and professional services and opportunities for board professionals from AGB member institutions with the goals of encouraging and enabling board professionals to advance the quality and effectiveness of board governance at their institutions, and elevating the role of the board professional and board professional's satisfaction with their service. And whereas in conjunction with these objectives, the AGB BPLG provides virtual and in person networking professional development opportunities for board professionals throughout the year in collaboration with AGB. And the secretary and the deputy secretary have actively participated in such activities, including presentations at webinars and conferences. And whereas the secretary has served as the program chair for two years, vice chair, and now chair of the BPLG, and is hosting the group in New York City for their annual summer planning meeting, during which time the group will plan the annual AGB Board Professionals Leadership Conference and professional development activities for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year. And whereas the secretary completed the AGB Board Professionals Certificate Program, which included ten hours of coursework plus additional enrichment and networking opportunities, and was awarded a certificate that demonstrates a commitment to professional development and academic learning, and the deputy secretary has nearly completed the program as well. And whereas from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, the secretary of the board simultaneously served as interim president of the Research Foundation at the City University of New York, Harvard CUNY, while the deputy secretary. Here you go.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appoint Galen Horwitz as senior vice chancellor and secretary of the Board of Trustees and an annual salary of three hundred and twenty five thousand six hundred eighty four dollars, subject to fiscal ability, effective June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. And be further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appoint Anna Fenton as associate vice chancellor and deputy secretary of the Board of Trustees and an annual salary of two hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty five dollars, subject to fiscal ability, effective June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Explanation, and I would like to move item, I'd like to make a motion to add item fifteen to our agenda. May I have a second? All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Item fifteen has been added. I would like to move item number fifteen. May I have a second? Any discussion on the item? Will, any other comments? I have one second. Hold on. Let's move to a vote first. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Congratulations. And let me, let me add my thanks to both of you for the work that you do, for this boy and for this sister. So thank you both so much. There be no further business. I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned.